Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for attending. This is a special board meeting for the public hearing to discuss the revocation of County Road 50 from 400th Street South to Trunk Highway 52 and from Trunk Highway 52 Southwest to Trunk Highway 57 to Mineola Township. So, we have to go down?
Well, I don't know Greg wants to cover it.
Yep.
Just go over some of the reasoning that's behind it and then have them all come up for public comment.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, the purpose here is, the purpose for this meeting is to discuss the county turning over County Road 50 to the township. And the other portion of the discussion is the county board taking over the section of 400th Street on County Road 50 and County Road on the other side. So, the reason that this whole process came to fruition is when MINDAC came along with their Highway 52 project and they cut off Highway 50, north side, the northeast side of 50 was now a dead end at 52 with the cul-de-sac at the end of it. Southwest side of MINDAC connected 415th Street and 135th Avenue together. And County Road 50 now terminates at that new section, that new gravel road just right at Highway 52 but outside of the right-of-way. In order to revoke a county highway, Minnesota Statute of 6311 requires that the county board hold a hearing in the town where the highway is located. That's why we're meeting here, not at the county board courtroom. During this public meeting, the township officers and others are to be given the opportunity to be heard concerning the revocation of the roadway. The statute also requires that these segments be brought up to current standards before revocation. The segments, County Road 50 currently meet county standards for a similar road. But in this case, Mineola Township, Brad and I, Commissioner Anderson and I were here in January or sometime.
It was cold.
It was cold. I remember it was cold. And actually, Mineola Township, and this is actually quite common, the townships would rather have, first they'd like us to inspect all the culverts on the road, to replace any of the culverts that impore conditions they don't have to come back later to fix them. Reclaim the old pavement on the roadway, basically turns it back into basically a gravel base and then add a gravel servicing over the top of it. So, once it's done, the township should be able to maintain it as they would with the rest of their gravel road system. And as I mentioned before, they're the county board, we've already brought their attention and they're, at this point, they're comfortable with the concept that we would then take over 400th Street and therefore, we would end up re-grading that road and then paving it. So, then it would be a paved section of roadway from County Road 8 going east to County Road 7. And that little connection may be even more and more important in the future depending on what happens with this hell study that the state is doing as they're trying to figure out exactly how to get access to this part of Highway 52. It will be a federal project someday, so. So, once the public meeting is closed, then the county board can consider a resolution to revoke the highway and document their decisions as we move forward. So, my recommendation to staff is that the commissioners hold a public hearing to discuss the revocation and basically hear what the public has to say about it. And at that point, they can consider adopting the resolution to revoke it. If something else comes up and there's another changes to it, we could revise the resolution and bring it back to the board at a regular and following the board meeting, so. With that, turn it back to the chair if you'd like to start the public hearing. We would like, just for the sake of that.
Oh, yeah, interest, just, I, we don't have names here, can you introduce the board? Like, I know Brad, but that's neither.
Yes.
So, we have a board, you know.
Good evening. My name is Linda Flanders and I am the county board chair.
And your district?
And I am in District 1, which is part of Red Wing and Welch Township.
Brad Anderson, District 2, Mineola is in my district along with Gulfport, Vasa, Featherstone, Tonne Falls, Stanton, and Green Township and the city of Kendall.
I'm Susan Betcher and the only township I have is Wapuwi Township and most of my district is in Red Wing and I'm District 4.
Alright, we have motion to move to the public hearing.
Salute Anderson.
Thank you, Bethany.
Alright, all some favors say aye.
Aye.
They want opposed. Alright, the public hearing is open. And if you would like to speak, we need, we would like your name and address, correct?
Yep, just for, for the record.
We need to put them in minutes.
Yep. Somebody's gotta say something.
You're on the air.
40987 County Road 50, board of orders. That's my address.
Sorry, can you repeat that after I do this? Can you repeat your address after I do this?
40987 County Road 50. When you are gonna, are you gonna have to grade that road up, right?
Why not?
Why not?
Probably not.
Probably not.
I mean, most townships would rather have, you know, a standard, you know, road. So, we, at this point, we're planning basically to check and replace any culverts that are bad and basically grind up the existing cop pavement out there and then put gravel servicing on the top of it.
Yeah, but you, from the corner over toward there, so you're talking 400? 400. Yes. Yes, 400, yes, 400, that will be 400.
It will be re-grated, so then it will match up and be the same with this County Road 50.
So, how do you, how do you treat that? Do you buy a right-of-way or just easements like if it is now?
It depends, you know, some, it depends on, we have, we have not looked into the right-of-way outlook there to see what is out there as far as easements or right-of-ways concerned.
You're starting with something like the state, you know.
Well, yeah, because we haven't, we haven't started doing any work on it yet. Because when I, I can put the time into work unless we go from the board and from this meeting here, it's gonna move forward. So, I can move forward, that's the reason for us to waste any time on that at this point. But we will, we do plan to re-grade that road and then put a two-month paving.
And how soon is that gonna be?
At this point, it's not in the four-year, it's not in the five-year program at this point.
Okay.
So, the objective is to try to find a good, a good place where it's gonna fit with the other grading projects that we're doing and as it can fit with the other projects that we already are planning to do. So, we can't give you an exact time when that will happen.
So, it's more than likely closer to five years then?
Potentially, yeah, potentially.
It could get elevated.
It could.
Could what? It could get elevated farther up and get done later. I think, I think it will, there's timing. When will we grind up, when will we grind up and turn that road back to gravel? So, that could be this fall, it could be next summer. Depending on some other projects we got, our five-year plan always gets adjusted. It never is five years and that's exactly what we're gonna do and then we follow it to the T. We're already looking at a road that may have to get pushed back because we haven't gotten far enough to get it bid. So, it is always a challenge. But we, I think the intent would be, if we get this other road gravelled, we wanna get the other one done. We just do. We wanna get that to be a through-backage road for 52. And that's exactly what I considered, that a baggage road. People are gonna come back to that and make their travel either to 7 or to 8 on the 52 depending on what happens at 7, but that's probably many years out before we actually get a project to do something with 7.
But you're in a hurry to reclaim 50?
Well, I mean, there's, there's no reason we have to be in a hurry to do it. We have to go through this process and then the board can make the decision if they wanted to revoke it. And once it is revoked, then the county's still responsible to maintain, maintain it for two years after that. But if it makes sense that Mineola Township would rather have us not do anything to 50 and basically leave it as it is and, you know, we actually get closer to where there's gonna be a project on, or on the street, if that's what the township figured out true, we can work that into the equation too.
By then, it'll probably reclaim itself.
Yes, it will.
Around the block, isn't it? Yeah, it's no rush, that's fair.
And there's, there's nothing saying that we have this meeting and it has to happen immediately. This is just part of the process. We have to have this meeting, then put it in the program. And we wanna work with the township. We don't wanna do something that is counteracted to what they wanna do. And it just doesn't do anybody any good to do that, so we'll work out where it makes sense. But as Brad said, we've gotta figure out someplace in the five-year program where it will fit. And we've got some other large grading projects coming down the line. Large grading projects can run into right-of-way difficulties and that could open up a window similar than that later.
So, then it's, what if it's closer, you're gonna deal with us landowners?
I can't ask that question. It depends on where it's gonna end up in the program too. I mean, if it's not gonna be in the program for four years, we got other projects we're gonna be working on before we start talking to landowners.
Is the question like how far in advance would landowners know? So, like, if you know when they're gonna do the project, do you talk with landowners six months ahead of time or?
Well, first, first we'll have to, at some point, we'll come back to the board to look at the design for that project. And once the board approves that, then we'll start working on the design itself. When the design is starting to come to tell us how much right-of-way we're gonna start needing, that's, that's when we start the conversation with the landowners. When we have, when we know more about what the final project is gonna be and how much of the land's gonna be impacted by it.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
13645, for 15th Street way. Right down on the end of 50 and 52 on the east side.
Okay.
Alright. We run like a little repair shop out there, a little motorcycle business and stuff. We moved out there because we had good access to 52 and because it was blacktop. Already lost all the access to 52. We can still go up to 8 for blacktop and down to 7 for blacktop. But now you guys are gonna take all my blacktop away from me, right?
That's what they, it's, if that's what the township wants us to do, that's what we're gonna do. And that's, sure, that's exactly the reason for this meeting is so you can let the county board and the township know what to talk to you.
But even like our home values and everything will drop. We go from being all blacktop roads to the last four, five miles being all gravel to us now. You know, so there goes our house back, you know.
It could, I, I'm not a real champion to answer that question.
And what about doing like a chip seal or something like that and leave the blacktop?
I think if, I think the, the challenge for a township is, it would probably be the only blacktop road you have.
More or less.
Yep. And the maintenance on a blacktop road is very different from the maintenance on gravel road. And the equipment is different and everything, so. We've had townships that have said, nope, fix it up, leave the tar. And we've had townships that say, nope, they wanna gravel. That's a township choice, it's really not a county's choice. We can't say, Mineola, you have to keep that tar. We can't do that. But that's, it is great, you're here, you're voicing it, your township's gonna hear, the county's gonna hear. But I think all the discussion that happens around when it happens, how it times with the, we take over 400th and do that, is all, it's all really up in the air as far as timing goes right now. Our requirement is we have a meeting here to talk about it and be an open meeting and we have public comment and then we, we will take that along with what the township tells us they want and go back and figure out how we manage it. It could be tonight that we say, we're gonna turn it over and then the clock starts ticking for two years. It could be that Mineola says, we don't wanna do it for six, eight months, that makes that clock go farther out. But this meeting has to happen.
And what's the purpose of turning it to a township? Like, why are you turning it over to township?
Yeah, it's not, it doesn't fit the function of a county road. Township roads, the primary purpose for township roads is to provide access to the property. Generally speaking, people aren't taking township roads to go from one city to another city with as far enough away, so that's, county roads are the next level up. County roads still provide access to the property, but now you're starting to handle traffic that's going a further distance, maybe a small town to a small town. And then the county's state system is, is a higher priority for us and has more traffic on it. And people are going even longer distances from one major town to another major town. Then you get to the Trunk Highway system and on the interstate system, that's for traffic that's just going basically interstate.
So, at one of the state meetings, they had the future planning out of running highway or County Road 50 over 52. No access to 52 whatsoever, but they were just gonna put a bridge there. That was future planning, so now if you turn it back to a township road, there goes that idea.
Yeah, I've never seen that in a plan, putting a bridge over a 52.
The state had it.
We were told this.
That's what we were told.
Yep.
Because we are very busy with farming, but now by us, we're surrounded by fields and it's constant combines, tractors, semis.
And it makes it very difficult for us farmers that farm on both sides of 52 to have to drive a tractor around very many miles now.
Well, it is tight access. Would you beat a car and now it's all higher traveled roads because?
You know, well, so the state is working on a study, a PEL study as they call it. And the purpose for the PEL study is to take a look at all the potential options on which you could do for 2 Highway 52. And the purpose of a PEL study is to do that broad analysis and then bring, bring forward a recommendation for two or three options that would then have to go through the deep environmental process. And during that process, we're gonna make the final decisions on what exactly is gonna happen with 52. So, there isn't any reason, I mean, the commissioners could say, we're not gonna make the final decision on this until the PEL study's done, but there's nothing wrong with that either. You know, the main purpose for this meeting is to get your input. And, but if the county board decides that based on that input, we should wait for something like the PEL study, there's no reason we can't do that. I mean, the world is not fire, we don't have to get out there and start rebuilding this road immediately.
So, what kind of input are you looking for? Like, do you wanna go around the room and just say, I don't want that to happen? Like?
No, it's, it's a matter of maybe if you wanna speak up, just let us know, what do you, what do you think about it?
I'm not sure what your reasons behind what, what your opinion is one way or another, so that we have the reasoning behind it. And from the standpoint of being able to take the minutes, take the notes, can we just make sure we have names and addresses?
50, board of orders. Got it. We moved down here 13 years ago. We have frontage on 52 and frontage on both sides of 50. We moved here because of that tar road. We run sound, as I all favor, we all favor. That road, if you put it, is gonna get reclaimed. That construction company beat the holy hell out of that thing when they redid 57. And when they did 52, I seriously doubt they minded the nine-ton road. When you, if you take this thing back to gravel, what weight road is it then?
It'll probably, it'll go down, back to a seven-ton road.
There'd be nothing left.
We bought that property because it was a higher-ton road for us.
How come Goodyear, Dakota County left everything intact? New signage, you get in, you get out, those J-turns are there. You cut our access off. Technically, like he says, you lowered our property value. Goodyear County is not a rural county anymore. You guys are halfway to Anoka County. When we left up there, the development of our property is done because of the stupid gravel roads on the end. That, but for whatever reason, but we run those semis out of there and we mine that seven tons in the spring. If we have trucks come in, we unload at the elevator in Wanamango so we don't damage it. Sixty-seven years old and I've never lived on a gravel road and suddenly this is a priority? And as far as maintenance, what exactly have you done to that road in the last five years? No, he ain't done much anything.
We haven't, no.
Was this the plan all along?
No, this was, no, this is, it was only a couple of years ago when MINDAC came up with what they're gonna do on Highway 52. This whole concept of cutting it off, it is relatively done.
But why did Dakota County hold all the accesses? We have a farm, the guy that talked first, meet Gilligan. It's a five-hour tour into his farm. We've got a farm on 52 right now that we have to go up the heater, go back down that road to get to that farm. When somebody gets killed, you're gonna reopen all this stuff because the lawsuit will tell you that.
Yeah, I kind of doubt that.
I'll want that five hours.
We also, we also have a farm on a dead end further south on 52 that the only way we can get to it now is to drive our tractors on 52 because there's no other way in and out of there.
So, which is kinda neither here nor there about this, but a seven-ton load all the time ain't gonna work. And then there's that slew down below us on that property line. You go on some of them other gravel roads in the spring that break up, you can't travel on. So, we gotta move all that stuff, I mean, we put hay on the farms or even behind it, but we have to move them because you can't split load enough to get down. Well, if that thing was the hell, how am I supposed to conduct the business? You sure as heck ain't gonna give me any money. At least if I got a tar road, I can get in and out of there. And as far as going places, I've been in Sparta three times this week. I was in St. Charles one time this week. Tomorrow I go to Moose Lake. Saturday I go to Moab. Kinda nice to have a tar road to come on there, when you say it.
I have one question for the township, and that is, could you keep a tar road in your township? Or would, or are you looking at, no, you only have the equipment for gravel roads?
Up until now, it's been, we only, we basically only have, other than a short little stretch of blacktop that was, has been blacktop and so far it's holding up across that ridge when we get to it. We don't have, we don't know what we're doing. We don't have, I mean, we have to hire a contractor for everything. It was just the assumption that that's what the township does, that's what the township was good at, that's what the township can handle. Now, there hasn't been any discussion beyond what you said. That was what was initially thought about. Nothing has, nothing, there's been no action as of yet as to any of this even happening for sure. But that is, yes, that was the township's point of view simply for the maintenance aspect of it because we, I don't think we could afford in 10 years to repave that on our budget. And I, there's no way that I could pass that along to anybody else.
When was it paved last?
I don't, I don't know, I can't tell you off the top of my head.
Wouldn't that have been a good thing at all? On the off chance he would have asked something like that?
Well, I might, I can't predict that far in the future to figure out what every question that somebody's gonna ask.
When was the last time you attempted to fix, add some of that stuff that's broken up?
I don't, I don't know exactly, I can't tell you the maintenance on that road out of the 400 miles of roadway. I can't tell you the exact maintenance that's happened on every mile of the road.
You're gonna tell him, so he's got a ballpark idea of this is gonna be?
I think I can give you the information.
He hasn't gotten that far to even really be asked for or talked about up until, you know, this is just the first step, is having everybody here and what do you think about it, you know? Because what I hear tonight, you know, affects the county's planning and also affects the township's planning because how, you know, theoretically as a town board member, how do I, how do I say, yeah, we're gonna take it, but there's so many of you people sitting here and say that might not be the greatest idea? We haven't gotten that far yet, the decision hasn't been made, but it's all on the table right now. That, this is the purpose of the meeting.
Right.
This is the purpose of the meeting.
Well, for selfish reasons, I work on the Southland Rochester and it used to take me a half hour from my garage to the Southland Rochester. Now it takes me an extra 15 minutes to get to work, so my commute went to 45 minutes. If we gravel lab route, it's gonna take even longer because it's slowly down that much more. It's gonna take me an hour just to get to Rochester. And I know, like, there's only a few of us on that stretcher road that it'll affect, but it still takes time away for my kids, it takes time away from my chores, my life at home.
We got delivery trucks coming down every day, dropping parts off, we got customers coming every day. They don't wanna drive on gravel at all. We already lost our 52 access. We don't wanna lose our blacktop, you know? And then everybody's been pretty good about taking aid, coming in the back way. And there'd be no options for that whatsoever. And same thing, you know? We moved there because A, we had really good access and B, it's on blacktop, you know? So, now we're gonna lose, we're gonna lose both of those in essence.
Alright, so business-wise, blacktop is essentially important to you, but from a township side, the?
What's the?
It makes sense, I get it.
What's the?
Okay, I mean.
Does anybody else have a?
Anybody else like to speak?
Oh, yeah, okay, the township, do they want more roads to take care of?
The county came for the township with all this idea. And if you look at, if you look at what the county's idea is and the county's logic behind it, it makes sense. But there was conditions behind it, you know? How are we gonna do this? How are we gonna do that? We haven't talked about any of those beyond the idea of stage. Nothing has happened yet. So, if you look at that, if you look at it as purely the concept of, this makes no sense for the county to maintain anymore because it connects to nothing anymore and 400th Street does connect. What's the county gonna do with the road? Conceptually, turn it back to the township. Well, you know, you need access to your farm, you need access to your house and your business. You need the same thing on the other side of the highway. Okay, well, it needs to be a township road, not a private drive, so conceptually, that's where we were at was, okay, yes, this makes sense. And then, okay, how does, what is the township's current, current idea as far as maintaining road? The 99.9% are crushed rock. That's, that's why we do it, that's why we do with it. Looking at prices of blacktop, I don't know how I would ever get that through a budget and get it done and not have somebody come burn my stuff when they've got their property check statement. So, that was the concept behind it. Now, we're at the next step, which is, what do you think about it? And like I said, as a township board member, if it's not what the township wants, it's, it's not in the township's best interest. You know, maybe we need to have some type of a different discussion or whatever else, but that's why we're here. It's purely the concept of it. And leading up to this point, the concept makes sense. Now, we're going to the next step. Is it something that we're interested in? How does it affect businesses? How does it affect getting to church? How does it affect commutes? How does it affect schools? How does it affect school buses? All these other things to take into account. And that's, we're at step one A of that idea.
Wasn't there talk of blacktop for four hundred street just for church access?
Well...
And that was ever before anything was turned back to the township, right?
So I've been told that there was a plan at the county level at one time to have all the churches in the county have blacktop access. And it would've been in a very similar timeframe as Mendak County fifty was painted. What year that was, what's happened since, I don't have any idea. It was before my time on any board or even to pay any attention.
That's why, that's why there's a... Eighty-three.
Was it eighty-three?
It's supposed to have their own road.
They do do that though, right? They try to keep all the churches on a blacktop.
We have, Van is probably one that's on the dead end over on the west side on forty-nine, on forty-seven with Belkirk. Forty-five is paved to St. Peters
Yes.
over on, over on the east side in Ballardir. I'm trying to think of another one.
And so are all those township roads, then, or are they...
They're, no, they're county roads. And they were county roads before. Actually, Belkirk Churches, St. Clonkyl, it was actually Ryan Minnesota. Had a post office there at Howard. That county road, yeah. And actually, there's a gravel part that goes the other directions from nine that used to go down. I don't know what, what it was down there, but let me just assume I had two because it really wasn't only. And county roads are made to go from point A to point B. Connect this county road to that county road. Connect this town to that county road or state road. That's the function of a county road. They're collector roads, they're bringing it to the next, yeah. And some of these that we have, we've set, and that's passports, that made the decision to go to churches with them. For whatever reason they did. Maybe it was who was on the county board, I don't know that. But, uh, other than that, we would not want to take over a road that goes somewhere. We would never do it. But township's function is to take the resident and get them to the next larger road. And that's what these become because of the fifty-two project, like it or not. It has split farms, it has made it very difficult for people to get farm equipment across there. I, I, we knew that going into it. But we can't, we have to, where do we put our resources?
But then why didn't you follow Dakota County? Somehow that...
Because we heard loud and clear, we do not want J-turns.
That isn't J-turns. Those people have access that they can get on to fifty-two.
Where, which county road can they get on to fifty-two that doesn't have a J-turn?
Because you don't want J-turns.
No.
No, okay, then I am incorrect, you are correct. However, what is wrong with a J-turn?
We heard loud and clear, that's the whole reason coming with seventy's, isn't it?
You effectively had a J-turn when you came out of fifty. You went down where that brick house is, I don't know what that street number is down there. Because when I had trucks that came in, because fifty-two was a death trap to try to get across that. Our rule of thumb, when we told every driver that came in there to go down to that crossing, you could sit in that turn lane, watch no traffic coming at you. You swung and went back when they went to the cities to pick up freight. There was a J-turn there forever. Nobody called it that. And just because you decided J-turns were horrible, don't mean there's anything wrong with them. They stick on every...
I didn't say I decided that.
The board.
No, I said the public said we don't want J-turns. We do not want, that's what we heard loud and clear. I don't know if you attended the open houses at VFW, but we heard it loud and clear there. We do not want J-turns.
We were loud and clear about right on, right off?
Yeah, I know you were.
That went nowhere. Everybody wanted that.
Sometime we're off, but we're in the weeds.
But this is how, this is why everybody's mad is because we're gonna tell these fifty-two meetings and we're told this, this, and this. Right until one fifty-two meeting, their ten-year project is they're gonna put a bridge connecting fifty across fifty-two. Now it's gonna go back to township and that's never ever gonna happen, right?
The guy who bought the right, we told him.
I've never seen this anywhere.
We bought the power line poles or we bought that right?
Well, that's, I mean, they are in this, they are in a study right now to try to figure out what is the next step on fifty-two.
I had a question about that, yes, because you alluded to...
Ma'am, that is not the purpose for this, the purpose for this meeting. Anybody else? What's your opinion about fifty?
We live on four hundred street.
I'm sorry, can we hear your name and address too? I'm sorry for the record.
Seth Silverson, one, two, seven, three, four, four hundred street, Good U. I live right on this gravel road that you're gonna tar apparently. And yeah, and I don't like any of it.
Oh, that's good to know. I mean, that's, that's the purpose for this meeting. So we wanna hear from you.
Because I mean, if you know where my house is and the road, I'm on top of the road the first hand.
And you, the house is very close to the road?
Yep, that's us. So, and now, okay, and I know those people over here that have that business. I moved to the country to get away from people, get away from the traffic. And now since you, you know, you shut down fifty, that guy's business is all going by our place. We got so damn much traffic by our place before. I mean, we could be in the house and we could look and say, oh my God, that's David, that's our neighbor. Now we don't know who the hell is going by. And now you wanna tar it? Now you wanna tar it, I mean, and you want me to back out on my, out on the road? I mean, it's like, right now I backed up and I looked fifteen times, am I gonna get hit? I mean, there's traffic nonstop by our place. And then for another thing, and then we pay for chloride. I called to complain about, I thought the county or whoever should put chloride on our road. Because we took on the dust, we're like right, right there, right on top of the road. Nope. We've had chloride in the past, so we have to pay for chloride out of our own pockets. There's what, four of us that chloride the road?
And it doesn't...
And it does no good, no good. And it's like, okay, so then we got hayder farms going, we got all this big equipment going by and it's like, it almost shakes the house the way it is. Because it's right there. It's like, I don't wanna back out on my, come out of my garage and then try to back out on the highway with people going by six miles down.
I wouldn't recommend doing that.
Yeah, it's like, yeah, it sucks. It really sucks and it's gonna get worse when they tar it.
Anybody else?
Yes, can you name an address, please?
Uh, Ruben Scheffler, seven, three, nine, West Avenue. I'm here for Miniolo Lutheran Church. They've had different questions asked me if we, how that corner's gonna go down there, right next to Ron Kylos that brings across the fifty to four hundred. The way it looks to me, that's gonna have to really get changed because of a deep culvert on that side of the cross from the church on the west side. So we've had people ask how much of, is there any land that we'll have to give up? We do have drain tiles in there from the cemetery or the church. You know, so I guess we're just wondering, is fifty gonna be able to come straight off and not be in a regular square corner there? Or even if somebody asked about a go-around? Yeah, so I mean, I think that's what some are wondering about if, if, uh, I don't know, you guys don't have it that planned far along anyway, so I understand.
We've done zero, there's nothing whatsoever. There's no reason to do it this far, so.
I think you could comment. This could be, the highway, if fifty was continued on to four hundred, it would be the through road.
Okay.
The other two township roads would be stops. And could most likely be, they would not be skewed because skewed roads coming in are, are dangerous. They would most likely be T-roads. It would most likely be a long, yeah. And it would take, you're right, I drive that pretty often. It would take a lot of fill and whatever to change that whole intersection on all parts. But you would line up the township road and the section of fifty that goes, what, I don't even know what direction.
East.
East. East.
Yeah. East to seven?
East toward seven? Yeah, that road would line up with four hundred. And the other two, you would try to line up across too.
Okay. So there could be some change or there, no?
And, and your issue about tiles, you know, the first thing we do is find out from everybody where your tile's at. And if we're gonna impact them or replace what's, anything that's damaged and extend them outside the right of where they need to be. We do a lot of tile. Not particularly figure out how to do it so we don't have adverse impact damage.
Yeah, no, we have a driveway at the top of that, of fifty comes into the back of the church. We've suggested to our congregation that when you come in, come from the west and then to the parking lot and lead through that way. Do you think that any like that driveway would have to be closed because they're dumping more traffic on the fifty?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. You just, if you did, you'd just transfer it down to a different intersection. And you're on top of the hill to the east of the church. And if you went down to a township road crosses, your sightline to the east wouldn't be as good.
Right.
I, no, I do not think that would change.
Someone else wanna offer an opinion?
I have one more question. How, what noticing procedure did the county use for this meeting specifically? Was it just published in the paper? I know we as town board members got letters. What, 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 what went out and to who?
Um, we just, well, we're required to give notice to the township officers. Other than that, we just advertise it as, as a special county board.
Advertise it.
In the paper as a special board meeting, not even what it was about, right?
No, no, the subject has to be listed. And it's on the county website. My suggestion to everybody here is if you wanna know what's going on in the county, there's a section on our website to sign up for notify me. You can pick what meetings you want notices about so you know what's going on. Sign up and get it emailed to you. As soon as I get an agenda, you'll get an agenda.
And that's right through the county?
Right through the county website. And it's right up, I think it's right on the front page, it says notify me. And you go in there and you can pick what you wanna hear. Planning commission, board of adjustment, county board meetings, each adjust meetings, any of the meetings you want. And they'll come to you and then you can look through them and if you don't wanna, just delete. But if some would pique your interest, you're gonna know the same thing I'm gonna know. Well, maybe not quite the same. Because I talk to a lot of people, so I know more of the intricacies to it.
All right, someone else like to speak? All right, third and final times, anybody else like to offer their opinion? Okay, do we have a motion to close the public meeting? So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, the public hearing is closed.
So at this point, um, we have a lot of, a lot of information, so we have to go back and have a discussion. I figure, um, you two, you know, you guys have the most important decision here because we're not gonna do something that, that township doesn't want to see. From a systematic standpoint, this is where a recommendation was. We wanna hear from you and then commissioners too. The commissioners, next board meeting, we'll have an opportunity to discuss this. See if we wanna make a change to it now, if we wanna go forward. Or we really would like, um, you guys. I would, I wouldn't, I, I'd sit down and think about it maybe at your next meeting, then come back and put yourself a position. How would you like to see happen? And then once we get the position from you and what you wanna do, that's when we can put together an agenda and then have a conversation with the county board and decide which way we're gonna go.
And if you decide you wanna see what happens with the Pell study and if there's any more input, Mendak will take on that. We understand that.
I can tell you for sure there will be no immediate decision tonight because we're not a supervisor for a moment. I refuse to...
And Commissioner Anderson is right, that Pell study, they're getting very close to coming to a solution to the final recommendations of the Pell study. So it might be interesting to see what those are because it is affecting Highway fifty-two right in this area. And they're, I tell you, those guys are digging deep into every factory you could ever think of on what recommendations are gonna be forth to, to based on that Pell study.
And every one of those meetings, those options change and more things come to light. I know as a board, we sat here and spent a lot of time, more than one time, just thinking about who is on both sides of the highway. Who, who is directly right there, who has to go around and who, all those things got talked about. And now they're all coming into, they're all coming into light, all those numbers, all that...
And one more thing, we actually pinpointed lines, which just crossed the map all over, of who farms what ground. Who's farming on this side of the highway and this side of the highway? And how far they have to go to get to this field from their farm over here and what roads they have to take. They did listen to us on, and...
They did.
On all of that. And, and in particular, that road on your side was addressed about the weight and the trucks that you guys used. That was specifically addressed. I didn't know about the business over here, that wasn't mentioned that I know, but you guys didn't. But that was something I brought up.
But then, dude, if that thing's gravel road, no matter how easy we are on that road, you're gonna grade that thing constantly.
And we, we deal with it with parts of, for example, one hundred and sixty-fifth Avenue with Schumacher's coming out of the quarry.
But the other part of it is, if it snows and that guy wants to load hay in Milwaukee, it's gonna kind of be a stupid phone call. No, we're that, ain't pulling me out yet. And the county is pretty faithful about keeping that thing open. Granted, it's gonna suck if you gotta go down there and turn around, go open that road up and know it's not my driveway, but it was bought for my business.
Are they ever gonna, I don't know, I'm sure they're... They gonna put a server throw up along fifty-two? From, well, I suppose they went as far as county fifty. But from eight towards county fifty for the three places along the highway?
So, no one has said anything yea or nay, but the, the possibility of there being a need for some frontage very close to fifty-two is one of those things that, from those discussions that we had as town board members and on this Pell meeting, it's, it's a possibility that has had some light shed on it. No one said anything yes, no one said anything no, but people are thinking about it. And there are people way higher than us. So, there, there's an awareness. I mean, we, we spent, it was over two hours one night. And we, we started with, you know, I know Ray Ren's ducks and I know Ken Forrest has lain on both sides of the highway. And then we went out to you and Dustin and then we went, you know, further out, bigger names, bigger numbers. And they're like, oh, we messed with a lot of people by doing what we did. And it's, it's, it's all coming back around in this study because even though they just finished a big project right up in here, this is talking about access or lack of is part of the next project. And what they're doing is studying for the next project. So the book isn't completely closed, but there are zero promises.
But that would be the state, that would be the township.
That is this...
But they've been left into our recommendations.
The state is working with the township like they did to get one thirty-fifth and four fifteenth connected. You know, that was one thing, well, we're gonna connect these as part of the project that is, you know, just about ended, basically done. That was one thing they... That was one thing they did. And now we're talking about the next step. Timeline, who knows? Who knows what's gonna happen or not happen? I mean, it's, it's all variables all over again.
Yeah, but if they, if, if they tar four hundred and then put that bit of service through the long highway, if they tar that and forget about four hundred being tarred, so it don't have to run over their house.
There's, there's a lot of variables at play and nothing has been set in stone yet. And that's, like Greg said, that was part of this meeting. To gather public feedback and to say, you know, what does everybody feel about it, you know? And that's, it's a huge decision for the board as well. And there's, there's more thought to go into it.
Brad, we'd be kinda screwed though if it did go back to gravel. They're not gonna run a frontage road all the way down to fifty if it's ground. Because we'd have access up the back, whereas there might be some opportunity there if it stays blacktop, right?
Yeah. Everything's on the table at the current moment. I mean, I don't know, I don't know of anything that's really off the table. And it, but, but there's been no promises made. There's, there's just ideas that are just, the computer puts them off. I mean, some of the stuff that the computer has thought of is really unbelievable and extremely unrealistic. Others of it makes perfect sense and there's every, every option in between. But it's, yes.
And remember, the Pell study is not gonna give you any answers. The Pell study is gonna come up with saying, out of all the different things we've looked at, these are the two or the three that look the best. So now we're gonna throw out everything else and we're just gonna look at those two or three. And then that's gonna go through a full, you know, an impact statement process. That'll take several years just to get through that process when they start. And I, and when they get done, I don't know what they're planning to do as far as jumping into the next level of then doing the actual impact statements, to figure out which is the solution. So it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be several years before we know what those answers are. And that'll be several years after that before they program and actually do it.
But it's all part of this discussion at the same time. Because this, this intersection, this area is still part of that stuff.
Absolutely.
And that's like Brad's point. Maybe wait for that to finish up and see what might get emerged or not, or who knows?
And there's nothing wrong with doing that. I mean, it's like I said, it has an impact on people, there's no doubt. So there's, it's not like, you know what, we got some money and we have to do something right now. Nothing's funded, this is just a matter of process.
Is that what happened with fifty-two? Wasn't it supposed to just be on resurfaced? And then they had all this money, so they went hog wild?
I, I can't answer that. I don't, we're from in that, I don't do that on a form or a program. So, come board?
Right.
We're, we're gonna take no action.
No, we have no action that we're going to take. We appreciate everyone's input, it comes unless we hear from you. We don't know how it's going to affect you. That is one of the issues with coming up with ideas is that nobody really knows all the ripple effects when you have a public hearing and you start to get input from people. So.
What was your meeting?
Motion to close the meeting.
To adjourn.
Right, all those in favor to say aye?
Aye.